Calling the city council order. And it is six, two minutes after six, 6:02. On November fourteenth, ninth, twenty nineteen. Now we need a roll call by our city clerk.
Randy Hall.
Yes.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Joe Shai.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Samantha Lovelady.
Here.
And Mayor Wilson.
Here.
You have a form.
Okay. We better stand for the pledge of allegiance, yes? And Jason, go for it.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, on the mayor's report, the first thing I'd like to do is congratulate all the candidates who won their race for elected office. I look forward to working with each of you. I also want to thank those who ran for office but did not win. I'm thankful to each of you for being interested in serving the city and willing to take time to campaign. I personally did not do much campaigning for this election. I have chosen to stay off Facebook and not get involved in the drama that has been adding so much negativity to our community. One reason why I chose to stay off Facebook is because I don't want to read things that will taint my opinion of anyone. I try very hard to show respect to everyone, and I want to be able to represent each person equally as the mayor. I feel respect in my heart for each one of our citizens and will do my best to serve you well. On October the thirty-first, we had an exit conference with the state auditor's office to discuss the results of a recent accountability and financial audit. I'm pleased to report that the city has no findings for the audit, period.
Yay.
Yay is right. This means that the auditors are confident that the city and its staff is following all the state and local laws and regulations, and that the city's budget has been healthy and clean of any significant errors. I'm very happy with this outcome and excited to announce that we can begin to work on our water system, back, getting our water system back from Lewis County. On November thirty-first, I attended the mayor's meeting at the county courthouse and was a legis, which was a legislative roundtable to hear from and talk with our state legislatures. In attendance was Ed Orkut, John Braun, and the representative for Richard DeBolt's office. I got to talk with some other city and council representatives and report to everyone about our sewer project. I let them know that we are still looking for more grant funds from the legislature in the upcoming budget session this year. And I also spoke with Matt Madigiochi from EDC and Lewis County regarding the 'oh nine grant money. I was quite pleased with how the whole thing has come together. And I'm also going to be going up there to two different meetings shortly to advocate for us. The council, does the council have any reports? Did I forget the roll call?
No.
Do we have any, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Wait a minute. I have a council report.
Okay.
We are taking donations for our food baskets down at the Low Grant Cafe. And signups, if you know somebody that is in need, there's a difference between want and need. But if you know people that need help this Christmas and holiday season, have them sign up down at the store, and we will hopefully be able to help them out. So, and as far as any donations, we're taking, we have coin jars everywhere. And so, it's that time of year again, so Christmas tree, name tag thing will be rolling up right after Christmas, or right after Thanksgiving, so.
I actually talked to Andrew about that. Those forms will go out with the baskets from Thanksgiving. And that has been noted in the paper as well.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is time something that can be donated? Or does it have to, or are you guys just accepting money donations?
Um, we like helpers. I mean, we do have to deliver them, we do have to put them all together. We work with the Lions Club, and there's, they have a team of people. I don't really have a team of people, so yeah, I don't, I mean, volunteerism is great, so yes.
Contact Anita.
I'll sign you up.
Put my name on the list, please.
No.
No, contact Anita Low Grant, and email her, and she can get you any of that information.
Thank you. You also give the information to the press so we can do a little bit about it, so if you can, you know, too.
Just did.
I've had it for a while, and I've been putting it in the article. Little words, but a big feature.
Thank you for noting the press.
Is that all the council reports right this time? Now, next is the agenda approval. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council agenda for eleven-fourteen two thousand and nineteen, including the workshop.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. The motion's been seconded, and by, my lovely lady.
Oh, lovely.
And, see, is there any council discussion over that? Let's see, a second. All those in favor, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. The motion's passed. Thank you. The minutes approval. Do we have a motion to approve?
Wait a minute, didn't we, I think we got that mixed up. Jason, did you just do the minutes?
No, I gave the agenda.
He said workshop, he added workshop.
Well, it's underneath.
Did I put the workshop under the wrong one? Workshop was supposed to go with the meeting minutes.
It's not like that on mine.
I'm sorry.
Well, the girl who makes no mistakes on the audit.
I never plan to make no mistakes.
Can make a mistake.
Okay. Sorry. So that was the agenda that you just did, okay.
Yes. Now we're doing minutes. Okay. Should I read that over again, the minutes one?
We just need a motion for the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes and workshop for October twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
All those in favor?
I'll second that.
Oh.
Any opposed? Wait.
We'll do the second.
We have a second at first.
Oh, yeah, you have to second it first, okay. The motion has not been seconded, so we need a second.
Lovely.
I'll second it.
Okay. The motion's been seconded by Jason.
By Samantha.
Oh, Samantha. There you go.
That's all good.
And is there any council discussion on that? And if not, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion has passed. We now have the voucher approval. The approval of the vouchers has been submitted. Do we have a second?
We do not have it submitted yet.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first half of November twenty nineteen in the total of eighteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and eight cents.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded, and the motion has, is there any discussion on it? No discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed. Do we have a sheriff's report? There you are.
Yes, we do.
Yes, you do.
Good evening. Kevin Engelbertson at the Lewis County Sheriff's Office. I have the report for October two thousand and nineteen. We had four hundred and sixty-two citizen contacts during the month. We had five calls while we were working shifts in Bader. We had ten calls that we responded to while we were not on shifts, for a total of fifteen calls. So a fairly light month, I would say. We had seventeen traffic stops, we had one infraction, and one misdemeanor arrest. And did you get, you got the list of calls? Yes. Is that what you were looking for? Something similar to that?
Yes, that's perfect, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions on any of the calls or activity?
Has there been any calls coming in? None? Everybody mustered, knew they did wrong. They didn't want to argue with you.
No more. Don't call us if they think they were wrong.
Yeah. Thank you.
No, no more pen pal reports, huh?
Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Now we go on to city business. The first item of business is for the city to hold a public hearing on the twenty-twenty preliminary budget. But before we start the hearing, I'd like to allow the city clerk treasurer to introduce the primary preliminary budget to the council, and give you an opportunity to ask any questions you may have. After that, we can open the public hearing.
Okay, you ready, your name?
Yep, your comment, please.
All right. So you'll see your budget package. The first thing you have is the fund overview, and the twenty-twenty preliminary fund overview. So what you'll see that's different about this one than the last one I gave you is that now we have some estimates for what we think will be the fund balance at the beginning of the year, how much will roll over from twenty nineteen. Basically, I take averages over the past five years to come up with what we think would, anyways, mix that with what's actual right now, and we try to figure out what we think the end of the year average is going to be. So far, it's been fairly close. So you see with our beginning estimates in there, I have made a few small adjustments to revenues and expenditures, just basically lines that were highlighted before that I had mentioned. I wasn't a hundred percent positive what some of those numbers would be, so they've been put in there to the best of my knowledge. The other thing that you'll see is down in the sewer fund under projects, you'll see a four point eight million in there for the next year. I am not anticipating that we're actually going to spend that much, but we're putting it in there just in case our sewer project takes off and goes gung ho. We don't want to have to come back and, and ask, or change the budget because we didn't put enough in at the beginning of the year. So just so you know, that's one big thing. We probably won't spend that much, and that's just fine, but it's in there just in case, just in case we go gangbusters and get that puppy rolling. There are a couple of things that I did want to bring to your attention from this. You'll see that as you look at the fund overview, you see the first column explains what funds we're talking about. The second column is, of course, the estimated beginning balances. Then you see the revenue column and the expenditure column, what's anticipated for the next year. And then the twenty-twenty estimated ending balance. So the amounts that are bold there are what we're estimating the ending balances will be. I realize that in the sewer fund, I did not show how much is in our internal service fund, which is in the two hundred thousand. I didn't put that on there for some reason, so I will fix that for the next time, but don't panic, that money is still there. I just neglected to get it put in this form, so I apologize for that. The other, the next column is our two-month expenditure goal, and I know most of you understand this, but I'll explain it in case anyone in the public isn't aware of that. The state auditors like to see us have, at the end of the year, they want to see us with at least two months' worth of expenditures in our fund balance at the end of each year. And so that's our goal, that at the end of twenty-twenty, that we'll have two months' worth of expenditure. So that column shows what we would have to meet to get that two-month goal. And then the last column shows if our estimated ending balance would be over or short of that goal. As long as we have one month, the auditors are fine. They prefer to see two months, so that's always our goal, is to try to meet the two month. You'll see that in the current fund, the very first fund, we have fourteen thousand, five hundred over our goal. And then you'll see in the street fund, which is actually a sub-fund of the general fund, is under our goal by two thousand. So the REIT fund is more of a savings-type fund at this point for the city of Bader because we're setting that money aside, and it can only be used for certain projects. Typically, in the past, the council has approved, using the majority of that money, for matching funds for the park projects. And so as they start applying for grants, they can use that as matching funds. So we kind of leave that alone for that right now. And the sewer fund looks good. Any of the overage, more than what we need, goes into our savings to help us towards our project that we're working on, and to help bring down our costs, the increase to the sewer rates. So mainly, what I want to let you guys know is that you have fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars. That needs to be a lot allocated somewhere. We need to use it somewhere. And as you look through the expenditure line items, I want to bring a couple of things to your attention that the mayor and I have been talking about, as far as places that need, need some money, or maybe that council has put money in in the past and wanted to let you know. Typically, if it's highlighted, then that means that it's something that's an area of concern. So if you go to the pages that are tan, they are the expenditure pages. And so if you go to page three of the tan pages, you will see several highlighted columns on the far right in the budget for twenty-twenty. You will see that the Fourth of July celebration has nothing in it at this point. That has been a big push with our previous mayor and some council members. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but nothing's been put in that yet. The next highlight you see is park improvements. That's an area that the park board is always requesting funds to do improvements. The third highlighted item that's zero is transfer out of the current or general fund. That has been, in the past, our line item that we use for putting money into a savings pot for equipment. And we have been really struggling the last couple of years getting some money in there. So that's something that could be done, is putting some money in, into equipment for our public works, and there are definitely some things that John is really in need of, like lawnmower and some other, some other things that could use some attention. And then the last one you see, there is highlighted one, is the road and street maintenance fund. So right now, we have zero money in that fund. We have zero money set aside for gravel, or cold patch, or any kind of asphalt repair, or gravel repair, or anything like that. So you can use that, that money, that sum of that fourteen thousand, or all of it, if you want, for that. I did want to let you know that the next line item below that, that says road maintenance supply, STP fund, that money, there's zero allocated in there right now because that's not money that we actually have in our bank account. It's money that the county holds on to, and they get about thirty-five hundred a year for our city. And so right now, we have about twelve or thirteen thousand dollars saved up in there through the county, so that is, and that can only be used on streets, and like, street repair and maintenance. So we do have a little bit there that we can request from the county that's allocated for Bader. It doesn't show in our budget because we don't actually hold that ourselves. It's, it's that kind of like a grant, sort of, so, but it is allocated for Bader. So beyond that, the sewer fund looks fine. It's got, I am not recommending this year any increase in the sewer rates. We have increased it steadily every year, which we've needed to do, and I think we need to continue doing, but, you know, because we have the project that we have to pay for. But at this point, I'm thinking this might be a good year to take a break, give them, give it a little bit of a break this year, and then we'll get back on, on building our money up again next year, just, just my personal opinion. Council can make a different decision if they want, but that was just my personal thought. So I guess, I guess that's everything I kind of wanted to make you aware of. You have some time to think about this. We do have a council meeting next week where we'll be talking about budget stuff again, and having another public hearing. Did anybody have any questions about anything that you see that I presented to you?
I do.
Mike does? Go ahead, Mike.
Yes. On that, the money that the county has for us?
Uh-huh.
That's for streets and stuff. Can that be used for equipment?
Um, you know, I don't believe so, but you know, I've never actually asked. I, my understanding was that it was for a street project, not necessarily equipment, but, but I, I'm not positive. I can check on that and find out.
I'm thinking about that greenery that we were, were.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Let me make a note here, and I'll check with them and get back to you. Anyone else?
Anyone else has any? I'd like to see that we could at least have the Fourth of July, and also the road, the money, some money going to the road, fixing the streets.
And then definitely if John needs things, we need to kind of know what he needs so we can allocate right, proper amounts for what he needs. Just so we have kind of a general, does he just need a lawnmower, and does he need twenty other things?
Yeah.
So we can really sit and think, okay, maybe we can afford these couple of things this year, put off a couple other ones.
The mayor has asked me to work on a list like that. John's been out of town this week. He had a death in the family, so he's been gone this week, but he'll be back on Monday. And so I plan on getting some kind of a list together, at least, to get started.
Just a preliminary something.
Yeah.
Something that we have, like, just a general idea of who needs maybe X, Y, and Z amount, just to start, and we can always allocate later and then.
Well, one of the things we need to think about is having, we need to really be saving up for a big ticket. I don't like, his truck's not going to last forever.
Yeah.
So we really need to be putting stuff aside for that. Most of the stuff that he needs right this second is stuff that we can pretty much work into our budget. You know, a lawnmower is, you know, can be kind of spendy, but, but I mean, we can get something reasonable that'll work for him and probably fit in, in our budget, because we can split it between the street fund and the, and the parks fund and the sewer fund, depending on what type of equipment it is and where it's used.
Right.
We can pull money from different funds, but.
Could we also look at the, the idea that he really needs a trailer to pull?
Yes, that is one key thing that we don't have, is that.
Is that it saves us money.
Yeah, we have a small trailer, which is good for like the lawnmower, for hauling, you know, loading up branches and things like that, but we do not have a trailer big enough to haul the tractor. And so if it needs repair, and we have to rent a trailer, or pay somebody to come get it, it is possible, if we had a trailer, it would also help save on gas and wear and tear on the tractor, and especially on the tractor tires, if it doesn't have to run on the road so much, that would help. So there are some definite benefits to that. So that is one of the things. Thank you, Lois, for reminding me about that. But that, and a lawnmower that he can use along the roadways, and I know one of his weed eaters has died or close to died, and he's telling me that that needs to be replaced. I think that's the one that he uses that has the, the long chain saw thing on the end to like cut branches and things like that. And so I know that's, you know, a good one that he can use a lot is several hundred dollars. So those are the three main things that I'm aware of at this point, that I know we have been talking about, so, just to give you an idea of what some of those are.
And I think, do we have any motion or to open the public hearing or preliminary budget, I guess, which we will start done with? And give you an opportunities for questions after that. We can open the public hearing in your comments. Do we have a motion to open the public comments?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the twenty-twenty preliminary At?
It's more the time for the, how long?
Getting there.
Yeah. So.
Baby steps.
Huh? Baby steps. Have a motion for a public hearing that's been submitted. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we, the motion's been seconded by Samantha. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oh, is there any council discussion?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
How long would we like the, this is, how long would we like the public hearing to last? Who wants to speak?
Let's see, we had a couple people signed up, I see. Oh. Nope, nobody has signed up, I think, for the public hearing. Was there anybody that wanted to speak that didn't get signed up? One? You wanted to speak about the budget?
About the budget.
No? About the budget.
About the budget.
Yeah. What's that?
Mine's associated with the budget.
Oh, yours is, okay. So we have one person.
Good.
Wants to speak.
I propose to have the public hearing for as long as folks like to talk.
Okay. Is that agreed with, everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. That's almost true. Anyway.
Now you can do the vote.
Can I take a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it passed. Any opposed?
Motion's passed.
Let's go, Mo.
She's, hold on, she's done.
I got to do this. I call this public hearing to order at six thirty. Now, this public hearing is to hear citizens' opinions regarding the twenty-twenty preliminary budget. As a reminder, this is not a question-and-answer period. It is designed for council to hear your comments and opinions on the topic. If anyone speaks out of turn, you will have to ask to please be quiet. We will ask you to be quiet. If anyone speaks out of turn a second time, you will be asked to leave the meeting and will be escorted out. Thank you for helping to keep this meeting professional and orderly. Has anyone signed up to comment on the topic?
Mo Mowen.
That's her.
Up to the podium, and me without my Bible. I'm Mo from B Street. On the, on the, on the packet that you so diligently printed out, thank you, Jill, appreciate it very much, but I, we didn't go over the salary schedule, and I didn't know if that's something that, that any of us as citizens are apprised to. I'm assuming because it's in there, and so if we can go over the rest of that, that would be, that would be wonderful, just for knowledge for the rest of us. But what I came up here to talk about was a suggestion for the budget. I'll set my timer, three minutes. I'll set my timer, three minutes, folks. So my suggestion, when it, when it comes to allocating the different monies, um, let me start by saying, I walk every day, and I've got two fur children that poop outside, just like everybody else's fur children who poop outside. Um, it doesn't seem like anyone picks up their poop. And I'm not gonna complain, because I know that I've left dog poop in an emergency. However, it seems as though there's a lot of, a lot of piles that maybe we could have a solution in solving. Uh, and I crunched some very basic numbers, and on the outside, with some volunteer help from myself and all my other folks I can wrangle up, we can put in doggy posts with poop bags. I know, people are gonna take the poop bags, but in time, people will, um, in my belief, pick up their dog poop and take that responsible step since we're meeting them halfway. Uh, and so, again, really, really basic high numbers. We're looking, we, we could put in, we could put in twenty of them without a waste basket, um, for just over twenty-five-hundred dollars. Now, with the extra funds that need to be allocated, this might be an opportunity, for one, to create a little, um, community, um, togetherness. I've got a post pounder, we got some posts, we buy the boxes, we buy the biodegradable bags. We get six thousand of the darn things for less than a hundred and fifty bucks. So I think if we make that offering of the olive branch, hey, here's an opportunity to clean up after yourself. I'm hoping that all the rest of us will take up that opportunity to, to scoop up the poop. And as a last note, I volunteer to, uh, to do some of the removal of, if we attach any trash bag receptacle to it, to even make that more convenient, however noted, of course, as you all know, they're all, they're all over the place on the, on the main street, so we can throw them away. But I really think that would be a superb way to, to reach out to the people who are leaving the messes, to go, hey, let's, no one wants to step in dog poop. And so, uh, so, so, yeah, so, uh, and I volunteer to be the first one to pound in some posts and make Vader cleaner grass.
Sounds good.
Uh, I offer my twenty-three seconds.
I yield back.
That sounds good. Do I hear any comments? No.
That was your comment.
That was my comment.
Do you want me to? Can I respond to the, the salary schedule question that you brought up or statement? Um, just for your information, the salary schedule is included in there because I want them to know where the numbers come from. Um, but the city has a set ordinance for a salary schedule, and so that's just showing where each employee fits into those salary schedules that have already been set. So there's not, um, a discussion at this point about where and how much, because that's already been, been set ahead, you know, ahead of this time. So that's just showing where everybody fits in and what the different costs are and everything. So it's basically just informational at this point. Okay?
Okay. Is, uh, is there anyone else who wants to make a comment who hasn't?
Rich outside.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Hi.
The park board already has some put out in the parks and one by the post office for.
Uh, the dog.
If the two with the bags in it, they don't have a place to dump it or anything, but they do have them put out.
Oh, okay, that's good to know. We'll have to take a look down there. Thank you. Any other, uh?
Who picks it, picks it up?
Whoever's dog.
Yeah.
I mean, who? And who do you go to the nearest waste, waste can or drop home with?
They just have, they just have plastic.
Yeah, it's just like a little, almost like a four by four, right? With a little thing with bags in it. I've seen the one at McMurphy's.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Right, same concept, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's just like, it's.
Yeah.
Take it with you.
Right, if you're walking your dog a couple of blocks, you take it with you, you shove it home? Or?
Or, or we, or we take two cents and, and two pennies and buy a screw and, and a basket and screw it into the pole. You know what I'm saying? Like, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm real basic, but I would go and pick up the little satchels out of these because I walk everywhere.
That's a good problem. Is there anyone else who wants to make a, a comment, wants to comment and who hasn't had an opportunity to speak? Anybody else? No? Hearing none? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Motion to close, it has been submitted by. And, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. And the motion has been seconded by, uh, Mike. And the motion, is there any discussion, uh, from the council? None? All those in favor say of the motion, I guess there is, isn't any council discussion left. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion has passed. The public hearing is closed at, uh, six, six thirty-seven. The light was shining. The second item for business is for the council to discuss, to discuss the 2020 tax levy rate. Council is being asked to come to a decision on whether the tax levy rate should increase, decrease, or stay the same. The floor is now open for council discussion. Do we have a motion to set the 2020 tax levy?
Let them discuss it first.
Okay.
I don't think we need to change it this year.
No.
Budget looks healthy, it looks healthier than last year. I have Osteers' numbers here, so.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I agree, agree with him.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, a motion, uh, has been submission, submitted, do we have? Oh, okay. We have a motion.
It was just discussion, right?
Just discussion, but once you finish the discussion, then if you're ready to make a decision, it needs to be in the form of a motion.
Oh. Really, we'll do this right now?
Yep.
You're all in agreement, right?
A motion to set the tax levy.
So the reason we need to do it now is because the tax levy has to be set by the end of the month.
Yeah.
And we only have one more council meeting, and there has to be an ordinance and resolution and all that stuff written up to present to you at the next meeting, so I need to know now what to present to you at the next meeting.
All right.
And so, uh.
We, we talked about, um, sorry to interrupt, we talked about the, uh, um, just having a couple of the last raises for specific items. And are those items paid off now?
You'll have to be more specific. Which items? I know we had raised taxes at one point for the code.
For the code, yeah.
Codification, that is not finished yet. Um, and then the other, um, no, I don't think, that's the only one I can think of that we actually raised it for, was for the codification. I was thinking about the sewer billing, uh, software, but that wasn't a taxing, that was through the sewer fund only, so. So was there anything else other than that, the one, the codification, Mike, that you had in mind?
Um, no, I just remember that there was, uh, I thought there was two things. The last two times we raised it was to take care of something, or we, we raised it and then we kept it. Is that what it was? Or did we raise it the last year?
The codification did two, two years?
Yeah, the codification was a two-year plan.
Okay.
We, we did not raise it in 2018, and then for the 2019 budget year, we did raise it the four percent to cover the codification.
Okay.
I, I don't think that's correct. I think the codification was raised in 2017, and we used 2017 and 2018 that raise for that, and the money is still sitting.
All right. I had the numbers right, but the details wrong.
We got it in eighteen and nineteen, something like, anyway. I still have the money, I still have the remaining money, because we received the tax money for it. We just haven't finished paying it off yet. They haven't given us the final bill because they haven't completed everything yet. But I do still, the money is still there in the fund. And it is allocated in the expenditures for next year, in case we don't get it paid off this year. If they don't invoice us this year, then we have it in there for next year.
Codification of 2017.
So I should go down to, uh, number three, shouldn't I?
Not yet. They're still discussing the tax levy.
I can't.
We're waiting, and when they get done discussing it, then they'll give us a motion of some kind.
So can we put that back in the bank? Um, does that make sense?
Uh, I remember asking about that last year, and I honestly don't remember what the answer was.
Can you look it up for me?
So you want to lower the taxes and get less tax revenue, is what you're suggesting?
I'm, uh, yes, because we, I know that everything is going up, and actually, um, this year, I, I feel that everything is going to be going up. All of our expenses are going to be higher, just because of the minimum wage is going up, dollar fifty in January. So there's already a lot of people that are raising prices across the board to help absorb that. Um, but I do remember us saying that, um, we, we raised this, and maybe we would be able to lower it back down.
So if you, if you, um, are suggesting that we lower our revenue, then we need to adjust for that in the expenditures as well. So I guess we would need to know what, how much you're talking about lowering it.
But what did we raise it the last time?
I don't remember, I don't have those figures with me.
In 2019, we raised it four percent, and in 2018, zero percent. 2017, six point one nine percent, and that was the codification year. 2016, zero, 2015, one percent. If I remember right, every one percent is eight hundred dollars or ish.
Approximately, yeah.
Eight hundred dollars spread among.
Well, if you look at your, same here, down the very bottom, it says what the percent increase would be, and then how much revenue that would generate. So I would suspect that the subtracting that much would.
Take away, take out.
Same or, or close to. And these are estimates, because they can't give the exact numbers or something. So, but that's.
I'm, I'm still with the, uh, leaving it the way it is, not doing it.
Yeah, fortunately, I think we're going to need it, because, yeah.
Well, and one thing that has not been budgeted for is, um, costs for working on getting our water system back. There's nothing additional in the budget to help us with some of those costs, and honestly, we're not really sure what kind of costs that's gonna entail, but it's gonna take additional professional services from process, probably engineers and attorneys, uh, to help us get the documents and, and all the, the things together, um, to allow us to, to get to that point. So that's another thing to think about as far as costs are concerned, that's not included in this budget yet.
I'm good with it, leaving it alone.
Okay. Uh, so, now, the motion to set the tax levy. Oh, the motion to set the tax levy rate has been submitted by?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I thought you were reading the line above that.
No. Do we have a motion to set the 2020 tax levy rate?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
There we go.
We ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we not change the current levy rate for 2020.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Is there any council discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, the motion is passed. Okay.
We'll have a document to bank the rest capacity next time?
We'll bank that additional one percent.
Okay.
Yeah, that we didn't use this year, and we'll have all that in document form. We'll, two or three different things you'll get to pass at the next meeting.
There we go.
The third item of business for tonight is for council to consider ordinance 2019-06 to amend the personnel policies to allow for personnel, for employee contracts. You will note that the only change is to add the following language to section 105 of the personnel policies. Authority, uh, to contract. The city council has the authority to authorize the city to enter into employment contracts with any city employment as it deems appropriate. Do we have a motion on the proposed ordinance? Did you guys, we know about that, okay.
This is kind of vague. Did they, did they mention like the length of time on the contracts?
So each contract would be an individual entity. It's not, you know, you would determine that as part of the contract negotiations. Um, so there's kind of two steps to this. One is putting the language in that allows council to do contracts with employees. Then the second step would be actually engaging in contract negotiation with the employee. And at that point, you guys would, would negotiate with the employee and come up with the terms of the contract at that time.
And it says on here that the, it would take two, uh, counseling members?
It says where? The only thing that's being changed in the language is that underlined part on page two. Just that one sentence is the only thing that's being, uh, that would need to be added to the personnel policy in order to allow for contracts. Everything else is already in there.
So we're just saying, yeah, we can do this?
We're basically taking the right.
If we want to.
From the mayor to make that decision, right?
No, the mayor still has the authority to hire and fire.
Okay.
But, um, with the contract, that allows an additional layer of the employment for someone who is already hired. Then council can choose to go, um, enter into a contract with that person, or as an employee, if they want to, in addition. And once the contract happens, then if there's language in the contract, the contract might stipulate who has the authority to, um, cancel the employment contract. Or extend it, or whatever, whatever the case is.
So the city council has the authority to authorize the city to enter into employment contracts with any city employee as it deems appropriate.
The comments I've gotten about this from the public are really negative. They don't want this. They're not supporting this at all. It's, that's a hard one for me to say, let's do it, when we have so much negative backlash on this. And I don't mean it in a personal way, because I like all of our city employees, but that just, we gotta do our citizens' right in the same respect, and I don't know. I'm on the fence with this one.
This is an extra layer, as far as like, there's, you, you see it, there's a lot of emotional.
It protects that emotional thing, I get.
An adjust that goes on in politics, and especially, you know, this little group that.
Or small circle, I get what you're saying, but. Or small circle, I get what you're saying, but...
It's really, it's really negative, this is not to protect, it's to do both, protect our employees, but also to protect the city, because to have someone come in here and just clean house because, you know, we'd send us back.
No, I get exactly what you're saying of that, but...
That's all that is, it's a, it's an extra layer.
I'm not one to say that was horrible, but for every citizen that came and has talked to me about it, it's, they don't want this, they don't want that extra protection, which I always have to respect in a certain degree, I have to respect what people are asking.
Sure, I respect what they're, what they're saying.
And now, we also have to respect their vote, so if they're voting someone in that wants to come clean house, that's me, I'm gonna respect that vote, if that makes any sense. I don't know, that's just where I stand on it.
May I give an opinion?
Yep.
From an employee point of view, I'm not sure what it is that the public is against as far as that's concerned. As an employee, it's, it's not a good place to be to know that you can be fired for no reason.
Right, and I agree with that.
So, so as an employee, it feels like your employer doesn't care enough to, to put securities in place. Now, in the past, they've had, the employees were part of a union, so they had protection from being fired without cost. The union is, was, the contract with the union was dissolved before I came on in 2010, and we've not had that since then. That, that gives the city tremendous power, but as an employee, does it make me feel valued that I could be fired for no reason? I have clean audits every year.
And I don't mean anything...
No, 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 I know, but I'm just trying to give you the point of view from your employees, that this is a protection for the employees, if I were to come here now and know if I was wanting to get hired and I came here to apply for a job now, I would be very concerned about the situation and the way that it's set up. At the time, when I was hired originally, I wasn't that concerned about it, it was a part-time job when I first started, I didn't care. But now, as an employee that's been here for a while, it's concerning to feel, to know that, you know, somebody could get in and not like you, and there goes everything, and, you know, that your life is based on as far as, you know, your family's financials. So I guess, I mean, to that, I, I would like to know why these people don't want their employees to have any kind of protection, that concerns me that they, that they don't want their city employees to have protection.
I think it's wrong to have one person make that determination, just because they dislike the person, that there should be some other input, maybe it requires at least a couple council members or somebody to prove, discard an employee, especially one that has an excellent track record, and just based on voting someone in, okay, that gets rid of them, I have a problem with that.
And that, I, I can't disagree with that to a certain degree, but what I can disagree with is if we're voting someone in because they wanna get rid of someone, because they're allocating or advocating for us, how can I take that right away from them?
Well, you're not, you're just giving, you're not taking their right to...
Do we have any public comment on this? Can I take a public comment?
To proceed to do it, what, what you're doing is having some oversight with some other, you know, you just have one person, powerful person throw somebody away like that.
Yeah. And this is kind of... No, I kind of get what you're saying, but I also get that we have to respect our citizens.
Well, we can respect them, but also have some safeguards.
That, to me, it's a little too much safeguards, but that's just my...
Is it to have the, to have the city council, who are also elected, to make that, make that decision? You think that's not, I mean, we have just as much...
I don't know, to me, personally, I wanna side with what our citizens are saying, they're saying they're not happy with this idea, they're saying they don't want this idea to go through, and maybe they're saying that for skewed personal reasons, but to me, my job as their representative right now is to come and voice that to you. So whether my personal feeling is slightly different or not, I feel like I am their representative, and that is my job to voice that they are unhappy with this and they don't want this, regardless of what reasons they have for those.
And there's a lot of them, you're saying?
There's enough of them to make a difference, at least in my opinion, from what I've received, but you have some comments, I don't know if some of you want to take them.
Donna?
That's a state RCW that's been in place for a lot of years, and all the employees that do their job never had the fear of getting fired, and there are state laws, employment laws that have protections, I mean, even though they say you can fire them for no reason, you still kind of have to have a reason or you can't get sued, so I don't see why we need this.
I can see that a city recently did put a clerk on the union to protect your position because of the amount of training it takes to train a new clerk.
Yeah, it's to protect the city, it's protecting.
It protects them. They didn't just do that.
We have employees here that work for the office, were in the union at one time, and one of them almost bankrupted the city and couldn't get rid of the other one because they were so bad, because they belonged to a union, and they just ripped the city apart, almost bankrupted it because of that, so I don't know, how long you been working here, Jill?
Nine years.
Nine years, and you're still here.
Well, that, that argument in itself supports having some oversight on just one person firing, in fact, would be less likely to have a union, so you're, you're kind of countering your own argument in that respect.
Well, I don't know about that, I just don't think we need a union, and I don't think we need this other order.
You will get a union if, if you don't have some, you know, some additional oversight besides one person having the power to, to fire and hire.
I'm just saying, the state of Washington thinks it's fine to have that RCW, so I, you know, maybe you should go up and talk to Olympia.
I'd love to hear from them, and...
Yes. Thank you, I didn't know, I didn't know if we could ask questions, so I just, but I wanted to ask, so in essence, aren't we kind of your employers? Because you guys, well, you guys are volunteer, but you get paid by tax money and sewer money and the other thing, and so what I would appreciate as a part of this, I'd like to know the pros and cons to this, because I, I agree that we, there's already so much in place to protect individuals, I grew up in an at-will state, Oregon's at-will, and even though they technically can fire you for no good reason, they have to give you a reason, like she said, to avoid being sued, and so if our, if you guys are being treated fairly, if, 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 if you're getting paid well enough, which according to the budget, it seems, from my layman eyes, it seems as though you are, why do we need an extra moment of litigation to add complication to something that we may want to speak up about later and have a difference in?
I know several things about union activities, I, I worked for the railroad, and we had an A card applied, anybody know what that means? An authorization of union, but I'm gonna digress. My brother was a police officer in Afra, Washington. The budget come out, everybody in the city got a raise, except the police officers. The council told them, well, okay, but this should bring the other employees up to the regular, equal wage with other towns. So the cop says, fine, that's wonderful. Next year come along, everybody in town got a raise, except the police officers. The following year, the city was dealing with the Teamsters. Now, I, I think you better consider that these people that work for our city need protection. You gentlemen and ladies are probably all honest, wonderful people, but what if the other next guy is not? That's why unions are formed, it's not the people that, the union members that created the union, it's the bosses. Thank you.
Well, you're just supporting what, what I'm saying, is that you, to have one person to fire a person doesn't give any oversight, and if you have that, then you will create more union, a need, you know, employees will think they will need a union because of that, having one person of power fire and hire.
The gentleman that, he and I got authorization cards for the Burlington Northern Railroad toy dealers, talked to the president of this company recently, and he says, I'll tell you, you do not need unions.
Right, well, you, you're actually...
Let me finish, he said, there's two, only two things you gotta do, treat them fairly and pay them a living wage.
Right, exactly, and to have one person making the decision versus requiring maybe some city council people to also support or deny one person like such a mayor to fire or hire, that's what this is about, and that would, I would think, keep the union less likely employees in on the union versus, you know, having some protection for employees, and that's, that's why this came about, you know, having one dictator saying, oh, I don't like you, you're fired.
One comment, I worked for Walmart, and that happened to a fellow employee, she was a greeter, she talked a few minutes too long to a customer, which is part of her duties, and he said, I don't like you, get out of here.
There was somebody else, wasn't somebody else?
Do you have something to say to him?
Well, I just was wondering if you can't make it in the rules that the mayor has to have, you know, the, the whole city council before they fire somebody, and what's the criteria to follow as why you wanna fire them?
Right.
Without having a contract?
Right, you cannot, you cannot.
Okay. According to our attorney and to another employment specialist attorney, you cannot do that because of the state, the way the state law is written, you can't take that authority away from the mayor, the only way you can do it is to enter in an employment contract.
The contract then requires...
And the employment, the employment contract doesn't have to be anything different besides just the, you're still an at-will employee, but you're an at-will employee for the whole city council, not just the one person.
Right, well, establishing the...
The way I was interpreting giving her a contract, it was like a timeframe sort contract, which I can't necessarily support something like that.
This, this, this doesn't...
This is just preliminary.
This is just saying, we can have a contract, right now, we can't have contract with city employees.
This is just saying we can have a contract.
All this is, is saying that we can, this doesn't actually make any contracts.
This is a contract negotiation, is what we're getting at.
And when we do make, if we do decide to make contracts, which this doesn't say we're going to do it, but if we do decide to do it, we can make the contract, say whatever we want, as long as the employees agree to it.
The only thing...
Right, because we also have to protect our citizens.
Or that we...
Well, there's both.
The interesting attitude is that, you're still an at-will employee, but it's at the will of the whole city council, not just the mayor.
There's both, and that's what I was getting at, it keeps, it keeps the desire to have a union come in drive up the cost.
Right.
And it gives employees protection with a contract, and I, I think maybe a lot of people who talk to them don't understand that.
Yeah.
I've seen it before, I mean, I've worked at corporations like Freight Line who have corporate non-union and union employees, and he raises a good point, if you treat people right, you don't have a problem, exactly right.
Samantha, you were concerned about the, the time limit, just, just at our last council meeting, we approved the building official contract, and it said right in there for an undetermined amount of time, it's just, it's just an open contract until either party, it even said in there, either, until either party decides the contract was over, and we just, all we need is notice at that point.
I don't know.
People were great with the papers, now I don't think they understand.
So I didn't get to read this, and I kind of wish I would have been able to get to read it and let it sat down. It wasn't available in my packet for some reason, it just wasn't there, it's not a big deal. No, my, I didn't get that paper, it must have slipped, it's...
Yeah, it's just the, it's just that one little underlined part that changes our policy.
On the second page.
I think that it's important that people realize that...
It's so weird to hear them all talking about...
Some people love Jill, sorry, some people don't like Jill, and some people love Jill, and that's not the issue here. The issue is the protection of the city, Jill is super knowledgeable, you can see it because of our audits always being passed with flying colors, and for somebody to come in and say, you were rude to me five years ago, and I don't like you, you're fired, and now the whole city is in chaos because that one person kept a grudge, that's what we're keeping from happening.
You're keeping a knowledgeable asset in the city without having one person get rid of them, and also protecting the employees, there's only two or three from the same, you know, I need union protection, and I don't think the people you talk to understand that.
Which maybe you are right, but I, yours, I don't know, I'm still on the fence, I'm just on the fence with it, I honestly, I didn't look through the whole packet of stuff about it, and I wish I would have, because I feel like I would have been able to make a better decision.
Yeah.
Okay.
So my question is regarding to what Mr. Parsons was saying, is that an actual example, it's a two-part question, one, is it an actual example of some, some, someone or somebodies in, in our organization using the firing process as a popular, as a judge of popularity, because that's, isn't that illegal, that's not acceptable? And, and I agree that that's not acceptable, but no, but so far, I have not been able to hear anybody distinctively point out pros and cons to the reason we'd add a contract, and so I'm just wondering if someone can please, please explain really why we would do this? Because it's not legal.
The contract gives, stops one person making the decision, and, and puts it to members of the city council.
Is that currently what's happening, I'm sorry for the...
No, currently, the mayor has hiring and firing power.
Right.
Just one person.
Right, and that, that's why the need for a contract, and we keep, also, it would, the city, the employees wouldn't have to get a union protection, it would give, they have a contract protection.
Has there been a problem with it before, with someone abusing that power? Then what's the need for this contract?
Well, the need for the contract is stopping one person from having absolute power.
And doesn't, doesn't the mayor speak for all of you?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, hey, you're, you're educating, you're helping me understand this, because as, as a citizen, you guys are speaking for us, and I have no idea what you guys are talking about, and I want, and I want to know, you know, and so I appreciate your time.
Doesn't necessarily speak for all the council members, and that's the issue.
No, the mayor is sole entity to a certain degree, they have the right right now to fire and fire.
Right, and that, that's not right, would you wanna be an employee under those circumstances?
And to me, I kind of wanna follow that.
I, I have, I have been, I have, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, you're fine. I, I have been, and I've had many scenarios, most of my scenarios have not had a problem, because as we, we all three said, if employees are treated fairly and they're paid a decent wage, then there's no need for the extra litigation.
That's how it should be.
So I, I don't know, if, if it's good enough in the state of Washington, why isn't it good enough for us? I just, I don't, I don't have cause to stand behind it, yet.
Well, the state of Washington also gives us the ability to decide it's not right for us, right? I mean, we are not Seattle, we are not Chehalis, you know, if we think that our city, if it's hard to find good city employees and to attract them and keep them for a long time, it takes a while to gain that knowledge, imagine if you were in a job where every few years the administration changed, and your job was on the line every few years? I mean, what would that do to your morale?
It's not just morale, it's protection of the city's finances.
Well, not just that, absolutely, I mean, I mean, we are in a position where, where a handful of people are, have the full knowledge of the city, that, that's how we are right now, we don't, we don't have all these backups and...
I don't understand that.
Yeah.
Most certainly.
So...
Oh, just a moment, did you want to say something?
Yeah, from what I heard, that you wanna... Yeah, um, from what I heard that, that you want to add, it's like, it's okay for, say, Jill to say, oh, well, the, the water treatment plant, plant needs a, a city auditor, I'll volunteer at a hundred dollars an hour. Now, now she's doing audit, running their, overseeing their books, plus she's getting a, a salary from the city. It sounds like you're inviting the, the city employees to double dip, so to speak.
No, that's not correct.
That's not how it works.
That, that, that's what it sounds like to me.
No. That has nothing to do with it. It has to do with one person having the decision to fire somebody because they don't like them. Okay? If you had a.
The last mayor didn't see anything wrong with it, but I didn't like him.
I know, but that's.
That's, that's the point.
Can't change.
That's the point. You have someone that has gained experience and knowledge, and you have one, then you get somebody elected who just doesn't like them because of the way they answer the phone or something, get rid of them without any repercussions or, or city council be able to have any say so about it.
This city has gone through so many changes in the last five years.
You don't want to end up like what happened in 2007 where the whole place goes to hell in a handbasket financially. That, that's what it could lead to. You have to understand that.
That's when I was on council.
That, that's what we're talking about here. You're not, not getting rid of your knowledge and your, and your experience because of just one individual.
Guess what, what I'm.
Potentially happen.
What I'm, I'm, the way I see it, what we're saying is, our employees, regardless of who they are, are, we have so few, and they are so valuable to the city, that it should take a collective decision and not one person.
Not one person.
That, that's, that's what it is. They are so valuable that more than one person should be involved.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
That's when citizens get mad, though. That's when we start getting, I start getting the calls of what's going on? I get knocks on my door.
Can I say something?
Yeah. Of course you can.
When I was, when I first came here, and I found, when I was on council, I found a mistake. I, I knew it had to be a mistake. I mean, of course, I was a bookkeeper who worried with laws that go in rafts, that go on boats, anyway, but I could tell something was really wrong. And I just saw Donna do the no laws thing. Anyway.
I have a bit of an issue with that because Dave Holland was the instigator of all of that.
Okay. Anyway, okay, that was on the record, I guess. Anyway, but I asked like three times to look at the books, you know, and the mayor then didn't let me look at the books. And finally, I convinced him that there's an issue. And it ended up, we were a hundred and forty thousand dollars in debt. And that's sad. So if you, if you want to keep your city going straight, if you've got somebody who has like nine years and knows all the agencies, all the people who help you up there in Olympia or wherever, you know, it's really important that we, we treat everybody respectfully. And sometimes I think that, you know, is an issue with everybody. I mean, there's been a lot of people come in hooping and hollering and finding out that no, that doesn't even have the way it is, or whatever. So I'm like, I, I know it should be up though, I think, to, I, I would really not like to be, as mayor, the, the person that has to fire somebody, all on my own thinking, because like Donna was just shaking her head at me, and she's been like a sister to me for years. You know, I'm going Donna, you know? So, yeah, I'm not always the lightest, brightest light bulb, so.
But isn't the issue.
I know that's not the issue.
The person before should have been fired, and the mayor wouldn't do it, so she was totally protected. There's no difference.
I know it is, but it still comes out smelling the same, as far as I'm concerned.
See, that's a great example. The mayor should have fired somebody, but because they were friends or whatever, they didn't. So they were all there to the union.
I've got one more quick story, and this is a true story. We had a boss walk in to a dispatcher's office, we're like air controllers. And he walks in and says, I don't like these gentlemen who were in a room, no public, wearing cowboy boots. Now that's, you want to laugh, but don't. And our union rep looked at him and said, that's fine. You can put out that order, but let me tell you, you're gonna have thirty qualified men walk out of this building right now, and the guy says, oh, forget it. Now, that's what the working man sees.
Yes.
Is, is unfairness. If everybody was fair, forget it. We don't need, we don't need unions. Most, a lot of people are not.
I know. Okay, what's, what's your first?
Okay, so I know, I'm a time hog here.
I think that what made this urgent for me was as soon as Lois was appointed mayor, she had multiple people in town say, fire Jill, now that you're mayor, fire Jill now. And if she wasn't as strong as she is, and she just went with those group of people, then the whole city would have been a mess.
That's true.
That's what I'm saying, and that's why we need some oversight.
Why is it all just up to the mayor? We should, the whole city council, if we're gonna get some, get rid of somebody like this, the whole city council should be involved in it, not just one person.
I agree.
That isn't able to say no to their little group of people.
Get me a stay away from the union stores, right?
Okay.
And, and Mr. Hall, I wish.
Yeah, can we make a question about this? Because I think we have all exhausted.
Let, let him finish. Go ahead.
Sorry, I missed. I held my hand up for five minutes until you said, darling.
I hope we're here reading, though, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hall, I am not in opposition, however, I play devil's advocate till I understand fully what we're talking about.
No, I understand.
That's how kind I felt in the sense.
And, and in regards to Miss Love Lady, her and I never even conversed on the topic, and still, I, in the beginning, was in disapproval because I didn't understand this. Um, not that I a hundred percent still back this, because I don't, I don't see anyone's job in jeopardy, and I'm wondering why this is coming up now, but I do agree that, that a hiring and a firing takes many, as many perspectives.
It's a preventive thing. It's a what if. That, that's why, it needs to be done.
And, but as the employer, shouldn't we be in charge of hiring and firing?
You are, because you vote in the city council. You are in charge.
We also voted the mayor, too.
Exactly.
I will try to do my very best. And I don't hate anybody.
I have acknowledged that they didn't want it to happen, that not, isn't necessarily what I was gonna vote on, but this is what the public told me, so I wanted to make it known, that the public is saying these things. I'm getting knocks on my door saying these things, and that I want a council to be aware of that. Doesn't necessarily.
And in reference to your question, I'm sorry to cut you off, I apologize. In reference to your question earlier of what, of it being referred to as term, like they have, you, you, you in the office, you know, you, you served so many years, and you're, no matter what you do, you can't be fired, sort of, I don't, that's the kind of pitfall I don't want us to fall into.
Right, right.
Okay, so that's one thing that needs to be very clear, is that the contracts haven't been written. Council doesn't have to approve any contract that they don't like the terms of. Just because they have, they have the authority to do a contract, doesn't mean they have to do whatever the, whatever the employee.
And that's where I was having this understanding.
Yeah, the contracts haven't even been discussed yet as far as the terms.
But will we be present? I'm sorry.
All the contracts will be approved in public meetings.
In these meetings.
So they have to be, they have to go through the public process. Typically with contracts, any contract in general, you have the city staff and the city attorney sometimes, depending on the type of contract, working with the mayor to put together draft language that both sides of the contractees like.
Agree to.
And then once they, they both agree, okay, we think we're in the right place, we take it to the council and say, what do you guys think? And then the council gets to weigh in and say, we like this, we don't like that, whatever, we take it back, you know, it's a negotiation. It goes back and forth. And then once everybody's happy, then it's signed. If you don't get to that point where everybody's happy, council doesn't sign it, they turn it down.
Well, my point was that we're not here during the wording of the contract, and this is our opportunity to speak, to speak out, or speak up to this subject that you guys will later write on, correct?
We're a long way from that.
I understand that, I understand that, but we're not gonna be present during the developing of these contracts other than the approving of. Is that right? No?
No.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, for any contracts at all, not just in a limited contract, we don't have meetings where we get together.
Back alley meetings.
This is it, this is, this is when we get together and talk about it, that's it.
Why I made my statement about saying what the public had said to me, and why I felt it was valuable to say that, regardless of what came after.
As a matter of fact, we can't meet in two or three groups and do that. It, it's, it's against the rules.
But this is why I'm asking the questions, though.
Right, you're just learning, which we're all here to learn, and we're all here to gather.
Well, and playing devil's advocate to understand pros and cons.
I make a motion.
I make a motion.
Okay.
Good, good discussion, by the way. This is, this is great.
It was important for us to discuss it, it was important for the public's voice to be heard in that respect.
You know, a lot of cities, I'll get to the motion.
Hey, hey.
I'll get to the motion, I just want to say that a lot of cities don't have this exchange, where there's talk and there's sharing of ideas, you know, that a lot of cities, there is no communication from the public to the city council outside of public comment. So this is special, and this is good.
Yes.
So I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that. Where's the thing?
It's not on there.
Yeah. I move to adopt ordinance 2019 dash zero six, amending section 105 of the city's personnel policies originally adopted under ordinance number ninety-six dash eleven, to allow the city to enter into employment contracts with employees.
Do we have a motion on that?
Your second.
Okay, we need, we need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. All of us in favor?
Discussion.
Aye.
You have to know.
Is it, oh, yeah, is it any more discussion?
We're discussing again.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
Vote.
Nope. The motion is.
All those who.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
In and opposed. The motion has passed.
Yeah, maybe somebody will do it. Maybe not. Moving on.
Do you have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We have four people. First on the list is Joan Somerville.
I see.
Forgot the first rule of music. I didn't see a shark. Hello, my name's Joan Somerville. I live at six two six G Street. I cohabitate with Douglas Williams. I've only been a resident for the past six months. And I'm a rather light sleeper. Still trying to get used to the trains, but sadly, I have been disturbed more than once in the evenings with a very bad garage band. Who, hey, I'm a musician, too. And I do believe that you ought to be courteous when you're jamming. And yet, these fellows got started one evening here, it was on a Saturday night, two weeks ago, at twelve thirty P M. And I'm just having a rather hard night due to health issues, anyway. So I called in sheriff's department and asked, can something be done about this? And sadly, I was told, uh, no, there is no noise ordinance in the city of Vader. And he pulled up in front of the house and he said, I agree with you, they're a lousy band. But, uh, gosh, starting at twelve thirty and not stopping until two thirty? Previously, they used to do their jamming like on a Thursday, start about eight thirty for a half hour or so. But not everybody has Saturday night off. Douglas and I are business people, and we have a rather struggling little business at Yard Birds. And we don't take a day off until Monday or Tuesday nights. And we wish we could just have an undisturbed night's sleep and not have to listen to this kind of stuff. Also, something that was of real concern as of lately was shots fired at eleven thirty five Friday night. And it wasn't any BB gun. It was a twenty-two or higher. Eleven thirty-five at night, close enough range to disturb our dog. And kind of upset me. It's like, what is going on in this little town? To have that kind of thing going on, it's disturbing. Thank you. Oh, I was told by the deputy that I spoke with to bring this to city council, to see what we could do about, such as other counties, such as Grace Harbor and Thurston County have a no noise ordinance after ten P M or before eight A M in the morning. How about this city? Consider that as well. Thank you.
The city does have that ordinance. That sheriff was mistaken, so we need to do some, some.
Well, we better get a.
We need to do some education.
That actually happened to me too, once, on a Saturday. And I stopped the sheriff deputy and complained, and he told me the same thing, it was no ordinance. But then, I had reported it to, to that gentleman. And he said, that was mistaken, he shouldn't have said that.
Right. So we need to do some education.
The county does not have a noise ordinance, it doesn't exist.
Right.
They're confused that the city has their own ordinance. So they're used to working in the county, and, oh, yeah, we don't have a noise ordinance. So I will, I will educate the deputies, I'll send out.
Because that's what you told me before, this happened back last, a year ago, I think.
Yeah.
Wasn't it happy?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, it actually went to see where it was coming from, and I think it was coming from the street.
D Street.
The other, other side of the street.
On the creek.
Yeah. And he told me the same thing, uh, you're, sorry, I have nothing I can do. I said, well, I said, well, you can go talk to them, your appearance alone would stop it. And he did that. I said, you don't have to say anything about ordinance, just go say, hey, keep it quiet down. He did that, and it, and it did stop. So, I mean, that was effective, but he did tell me there was no, he gave me the same response that you got. So I think.
They're, they're mistaken of, of, they're, we just count human error.
I mean, I could see.
Really pathetic was that the officer in patrol was sitting right out in front of the house to where I could hear it from the phone, saying, you're right, they're a lousy band. And, but there's nothing I can do.
Well, they, they can, they can take care of it, I think they need to communicate better with the deputies, that there is an ordinance. That there is an ordinance and they can stop it.
If it happens, then call in and, and we'll, we'll deal with it.
Okay.
Yeah, not all the deputies are unaware of it.
Yeah, or as familiar with their ordinance.
Because they've come to my house and told me to be quiet before.
Amazingly, it did happen to me at the same time.
Well, you got kids, so I...
It was his fault.
Yeah, see, he's a twenty-year-old.
It's like not everybody does Fridays and Saturdays.
Right, well, yeah.
So we have three more people.
Okay, we got two more people.
Three more.
Three more people.
Mo, moan.
Okay.
Do you have anything else to say now?
No, I, uh, no, I don't. Thank you.
The next one?
It all happened earlier.
The next one?
Well, that has declined, so the last person on the list is Mr. Williams, Doug Williams.
Uh, I'll pass.
All right.
Okay. He does have good hot sauce.
Uh, any other public comment?
That's it for public.
Okay, any elected official comments? No?
Um, really shortly, I wanted to say thank you to our Facebook admins who have been taking good care of our pages lately. They've really been stopping a lot of the negative drama that we've been seeing online. And I know I appreciate that from my standpoint, to be putting my foot down, really cleaning up our pages, which makes our city look better as a whole.
That's good.
And it's me or I don't...
Yeah, I don't go there either.
My age, I'm on Facebook. It's what I do. I'm talking to family.
It has, I've heard some terrible stories.
It, it was really bad. It was points where we couldn't look at it, but it's way better now.
I, I'd like to make, uh, just a statement that I, I didn't, I don't go on Facebook.
You hit the gavel.
I know. I'm the mayor, just a second. Anyway. But I really, uh, appreciate the fact that, uh, the people have been coming in and I've been getting phone calls at different times to get to explain some things. But, uh, I really, one of my main things is I don't, didn't get on Facebook. I didn't set up a fine, sign. I didn't put notes in anybody's door or anything. And I'm so surprised that I'm still here. Anyway, but know that I will do my very best to be fair to everybody. And I, I really prayed about this and I just said, "If you want me in here, I will. And if you don't, that's fine too, Lord." So, uh, anyway, I thank y'all for me for that. Know that I'm gonna be truthful and honest and be good to you. And that's all. Anyway, we're adjourned at, what are we? Seven thirty-four?